There are 251 town meeting members, 126 constituents at Quorum. The constable informs me that Quorum is present. The eighth session of the 256th Annual Town Meeting will now come to order. Quick schedule review: we will be back here on Wednesday, May 28th, if necessary. We will certainly be back here on Monday, June 2nd, for a special town meeting, which will be immediately followed by the two rescheduled articles from the Annual Town Meeting, and then we have another date scheduled on Monday, June 9th, again if necessary. If you forgot your red and green tally cards, you can get a blank set from the check-in table. You must write your name and precinct number on each card. Tally vote cards without names will not be counted. Cards seven through 12 were handed out on Monday, which means at this point you should have a set of cards, numbers five through 12. You must bring the new set, as well as the remaining cards from the old set, to all future meetings, including to the special town meeting on June 2nd. We will not be printing special cards for the special town meeting. We will use this set through number 12 that we have now, so please remember to bring your cards June 2nd as well. The seats on the floor of the auditorium may be occupied only by town meeting members, except for the front row, which may be used by members of the press, members of town committees, and staff. Such persons must wear non-voter stickers, which are available at the check-in table. Seats in front of me on the right are occupied by the select board, the town manager, the finance director, an assistant to the town manager, and an IT staff person. Finance committee is seated to my left. Spectators and town residents who are not town meeting members may be seated in the bleachers in the rear of the auditorium. New information for members can be found on the back table to my left, old information on the back table to my right. Amherst Media provides gavel-to-gavel coverage of our proceedings on public access channel 17. Thanks again to their staff and volunteers. If you wish to speak, you must raise a hand and be recognized. When appropriate, I strongly encourage you to hold up a green or red card to indicate pro or con on an issue. When you're called on, please first state your name and precinct. If you forget, I will interrupt you and ask you to do so. If you need more than three minutes or more than five when speaking to a motion, you must request additional time before speaking. Town meeting will vote on your request. If you're speaking from the floor, always speak into a microphone that will be provided to you. Please hold it close to your mouth when you speak. Non-members who wish to speak should stand at the rear of the right-hand aisle, the aisle that is in front of me. Any registered voter of the town of Amherst who is recognized by the moderator may speak without special permission; others may speak with the permission of a majority. If you're making an amendment to a motion, the amendment must be presented in writing with four copies submitted to the front table. A copy machine is located if you need it. Procedural motions, such as a motion to refer or a motion to dismiss, do not need to be presented in writing. If you make any motion from the floor, it must be the first thing you do after you have been recognized and have identified yourself. If you've not already done so, please check your cell phone, make sure it is silenced or turned off. If at any point in time you're confused by proceedings, it is appropriate to call or email -- I'm sorry, it is appropriate to call a point of order and ask for clarification. Also, it's always okay to phone me, send me an email, or see me prior to town meeting. We're beginning tonight with Article 38, which we left in midstream, or actually, we moved to the date certain of tonight in midstream. We had already made a motion in terms of the article, and there'd been a small amount of debate, and then it was moved to tonight. So the first thing tonight is to finish up Article 38, then we move on to 40, 41, and 42, and that's all we can do tonight because everything else is either the town meeting, which is set for June 2nd, or Articles 20C and 34, which have also been moved to a date certain of June 2nd. So I now am recognizing Mr. O'Connor, who I believe wants to make an amended motion to Article 38. Remember, the current motion on the floor now is the motion in terms of the article.
Point of order?
I hear a point of order.
Mr. O'Connor, give three minutes or five?
Well, it depends on what he does, doesn't it? If he moves -- if he's making a motion to amend, then he gets five minutes. If he's just speaking to the motion in terms of the article, he gets three minutes. Mr. O'Connor?
Mr. Moderator, you have, and I've given to all the relevant bodies, including yourself, an amended motion.
Yes, we should get that on the screen, and this is actually what you want to say to town meeting once that's on the screen.
Point of order?
Yes, I hear a point of order. Wait for a microphone, please. Let's get a microphone to her quickly. When you make a point of order, you should stand up. That way, the microphone people know where you are.
Amy Middleman, precinct five. I'm just confused. Could you say again what we'll be discussing on June 2nd?
Yeah, why don't -- I think, let's wait until Mr. O'Connor speaks, and then I'll explain it once more, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. O'Connor, you may proceed.
I move to amend the motion under Article 38 as per the wording on the screen.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I hear a second. So, Mr. O'Connor, the motion that is currently on the floor was the motion in terms of the article of Article 38, but Mr. O'Connor wants to amend that. He wants us to be voting on something else, so he's making a motion to amend, and he's now has five minutes to speak to that motion. You may proceed.
Yes. That light is actually very bright. If there's a way that the light is -- that's just facing the speaker could be moderated somewhat. So this article asks the question, really, is the town's relationship with Amherst College what it should be? And do we trust the select board to use this authorization wisely, prudently, and effectively to improve the balance of that relationship? The question about the select board, I hope, is not one that anyone will really pursue. These five people are as good as any of the five people who've sat before this meeting in the 30-some-odd years that I've been a town meeting member. They would use this authorization, I think, quite wisely, quite prudently, and they would use it effectively. However, they obviously cannot ask for it because it would really poison the relationship that they might want to have with Amherst College. So the next question is to describe the situation with Amherst College. Thirty years ago, Amherst College, many of whose initial buildings were constructed by the farmers and tradespeople of this town, abolished the college's fraternities, converted their buildings to dormitories, and told the town that after five years, we would receive no local tax revenue from properties that take up at least half of Amherst downtown. Nonprofits have duties to their host communities in return for not having to pay property taxes, churches, synagogues, and mosques, host food banks, soup kitchens, homeless shelters, polling places, meeting spaces, perform musical performances, and speakers. Most understand about two-way streets and proportionality. Some colleges get it, witness Williams College's support of Williamstown, while others do not. This town has spending problems, but it also has revenue problems. One revenue problem is the acquisition of tax-paying properties by UMass and Amherst College. This article would give the select board a negotiating tool to deal with Amherst College's second purchase in a few years of a tax-paying business site, an acquisition that also leaves a town of 38,000-plus without an automobile dealership for the first time in probably close to 100 years. A vote in favor of this article will not compel the select board to acquire these properties, but it will improve the board's ability to address two revenue problems with Amherst College: reverse economic development, tax-paying businesses being taken off the tax rolls, and the need for unrestricted increased payments in lieu of taxes by our large nonprofits. There are some technical aspects to this article, questions that town meeting members may have, and I'd like to clear up some of them. First, a town meeting does not take anything. We authorize the select board to purchase, accept as a gift, or take. If any action results from this vote, that action will be initiated by the select board, not by you or I. Next, money. This article is structured to allow the select board to both acquire and dispose of these properties within a single fiscal year, allowing acquisition to be financed by temporary borrowing and providing that borrowing can be repaid by speedy resale. The net impact in the fiscal year in which the board may choose to act is designed to be zero. Third, the town staff is capable of finding an interested purchaser prior to town acquisition of these parcels, so they can be returned immediately to productive tax-paying status. Consider Article 34, which proposes the town employees be the staff of a municipal housing trust which can buy, rent, manage, and sell real estate, or the ongoing efforts to find an affordable housing purchaser for rolling green apartments, a $25 to $30 million real estate deal. If the town staff can do complicated work for affordable housing, they can find a purchaser for these parcels in the name of economic development. Then there is the issue of site pollution. Again, town staff seems perfectly capable of writing successful grant proposals. In fact, for some pollution abatement grants, especially ones that involve economic development or redevelopment, municipalities should and do have priority. Finally, there is litigation, and I will be happy to answer questions about that. Litigation is very unlikely to proceed from any activity under this article, including an eminent domain taking. Thank you very much. I look forward to answering your questions.
Okay, so let me explain a couple of things. First of all, we're in an unfortunate situation where there's going to have to be at least two votes, and who knows, maybe more, before we're done with Article 38, and that's because a main motion was made on Monday in terms of the article, and what Mr. O'Connor is making is a motion to amend that main motion. Therefore, our next vote is going to be whether to accept this as the amended motion. A yes vote means that this will be the motion on the floor; a no vote means that the motion in terms of the article will be on the motion on the floor. Once that is resolved, we're back to having a motion on the floor, and the next vote after that will be whether yes or no for that motion. The yes or no for the motion under Article 38 in either case, whether it's the amended one or in terms of the article, will require a two-thirds vote because we're borrowing money to purchase, to purchase land. So the next vote is simply a majority, whether or not to accept the amended motion, then whether that passes or fails, the next vote after that will be a two-thirds vote under Article 38. Any questions on what we're voting on? And again, discussion, I'm going to let it be open to the pros and cons of the article and the pros and cons of the amended motion because it's going to be too difficult to draw a line anywhere. So we are now open to discussion. I'm going to just check in with the select board or the finance committee to see if they want to speak at this time to either the main motion or the amended motion. So, select board, do you have a statement to make at this time?
Well, this being a turn of events from Monday, because we did receive this tonight at the same time you are all receiving it, and it does change the article significantly. So we have not discussed this alternative because we didn't have the opportunity to do so. We may have something to offer later in the conversation, depending on which motion is actually the motion we end up voting on, but at this time, I would say we don't have a different opinion on this variation.
Mr. Slaughter?
Like the select board, the finance committee didn't have an opportunity to speak directly to or meet and discuss the specific motion amendments that are before you right now. However, in looking it over, the changes that have been made to it are not ones that significantly alter the position of the committee, so I believe we'll probably stay with our current no recommendation.
Okay, is there further discussion before we come to a vote on whether to accept the amended motion? And yes, I see a hand in the second row right there.
James Scott, precinct seven. Seeing this does involve Amherst College in a very significant way, I was wondering if we have any opinion from Amherst College concerning this particular article, pro or con, or neutral?
I guess possibly not. I don't see any hands. Yes, in the back there, white shirt.
Victoria Morales, precinct six.
Talk really close to -- keep it really close to your mouth.
Victoria Morales, precinct six. Is there a map that we can see of this property? Thank you.
Yes, hang on just a second. I think we're currently on the overhead. Is there further discussion? Yes, in the back there also.
Pat Church, hello? Pat Church, precinct five, can you hear me?
Yeah, real close to your mouth, and let's turn up the volume just a little bit.
Okay. I understand that, I understand that that's the building, but does it also include the parking lot next to it? The other question I have is, I believe the prior, the most recent other taking by Amherst College that was downtown was the church near Selin Street, which turns into offices, if that helps anybody.
Are there further hands before we just come to a vote on whether to accept this amended motion? Yes, I see a hand there.
Adrian Turisi, precinct seven. This may not speak directly to the article before us. However, I would like to ask us to consider what our town's plans are when properties come on the offerings of, come for sale. We've already seen the old church being purchased by Amherst College and now paid Chevrolet, and I hear the concern about that particular purchase. Yes, Amherst College is very much a part of us and who we are as a town, but I think we also need to look at the encroachment of the college on our downtown center and our areas of potential development, be it for educational use, housing, commercial, or any other endeavor. So again, it may not speak to this particular article, but I would like to bring that attention to us as a body. Thank you.
Are we ready to come to a vote on whether or not to accept this motion? This is not the final vote under Article 38. No, I see a hand right there.
Tim Neal, precinct four. And this is more of a question. I am not positive that if Amherst does not use the property for direct educational purposes, I think they still pay property taxes, and we, I'd like to have that clear, please.
Mr. Poehler?
Yes, they are paying taxes now. They're still paying taxes on the property, and they, as I said the other night, Amherst College is the largest taxpayer in the town of Amherst because they own substantial plots in town. I think it was something, and I didn't have this number the other night when somebody asked, but it was, I think, over 900 plots, but they are the largest tax owner, taxpayer in the town, excuse me, and they're, they will continue to be taxed until such time as they convert the property into an educational use. So at present, they are still paying taxes.
Yes, all the way in the back there.
Jerry Weiss, precinct eight. Just to continue that question, I think to go further is they're not paying taxes because it doesn't have any use right now, but if it were turned into such, say, office space for the university, for the college, then they wouldn't pay taxes. Is that right? Is the church not paying taxes, that building? I think that's the question on the floor.
Mr. Poehler?
It depends on what they do with it, and so if they're using it for office space for the college, then is it then considered an educational purpose?
It absolutely would be an educational purpose if, anything that's related to their direct education mission, school classrooms, administrative buildings, and so forth, other buildings that they have, like an apartment building rented to faculty, for example, is taxable because it's not directly related to an educational use.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, I see a hand over there.
Louis Mains, precinct 10. I'm not an Amherst College person, but I do dislike hearing Amherst College characterized as a burden and nuisance. It is one of the glories of this town, and I'm happy to see them thrive. Blessings upon them.
All the way in the back in the green shirt.
Mike Giles, precinct four. Sorry about that. So I think, I think there's a general sentiment in the town around concern about losing taxable revenue, and I think, I think there's a lot of people who share that concern, and I think we need to continue to work with the universities to try to mitigate that, to try to encourage taxable development. Mr. Poehler just referred to, if they built apartments that they could rent to young faculty members, that would be taxable and serve their purposes as well as our tax purposes. And so I think, I certainly agree with that sentiment. Unfortunately, taking land by eminent domain is kind of like a nuclear bomb approach to try to solve that, and so while I hope that we, I hope that people on the select board and the town can hear the sentiment that, you know, we want to encourage the continued discussions and encouragement for the universities to make taxable uses of town land, I really don't think this is the way to do that. Eminent domain is really one of those awfully big sticks that governments have that we traditionally use in very small ways to widen sidewalks and do things like that, but actually taking property that someone rightfully bought is not, not a great use for that tool.
Mr. O'Connor?
Vince O'Connor, precinct one. I do agree that it's, using the eminent domain power that the, that this article authorizes might be an extreme measure, but that's not the only use to which the authority could be put. I'm sure that whether or not this article passes, there's going to be a discussion between town officials and Amherst, and the representatives of Amherst College about what kind of a problem this kind of acquisition represents. I do think that with this negotiating tool in hand, the town officials could say, look, we've had this, this type of an article before us twice, both times that you've taken property. The third time, we will sponsor the article. We may not act on this one, but we not only will act on the next one, we will sponsor it. Or they could ask, they could say, look, you've just taken the second property off the tax rolls. We think that, that the value represented by this commercial property ought to be returned to the town in some way. It's about the property at 79 South Pleasant, the old church, which is now Amherst College offices and definitely not taxable, was in the neighborhood of $15,000 to $20,000 taxpayer. This property is slightly less, but I think that this, having this kind of tool in hand, even if it's a tool that the select board literally surely cannot ask for in public and can protest being, having it being given to them, will prove useful. And I just think that you can't go into negotiation, whether it's with a private landlord or with a nonprofit entity like Amherst College, given the town's relationship with Amherst College and who built some of those first buildings, and what happened to all that dormitory that those tax-paying fraternities, when they became dormitories. That's like a half a million dollars off the tax rolls. From 1984 to 1989, it went down from 100% to zero, and a half a million dollar tax-paying situation was wiped off our books. Amherst College does pay taxes on the homes that it owns just west of the main campus, but they do not pay taxes on any of the dormitories which were formerly fraternities. That's enormous tax loss for the town, and something has to be done to regain that, and in order to negotiate effectively, you have to have a tool that is equivalent to the task at hand.
Ms. Marcus requested to speak. Calling on her now.
I speak to you this evening in opposition to Article 38, the proposed taking, among other means, by eminent domain of 40 Dickinson Street. You don't have to be a lawyer to understand that this article is legally indefensible. Despite the petitioner's claim of economic development and other municipal purposes, the warrant makes it clear that the purpose of this taking would be for a private, non-municipal, and namely for-profit use. The United States Supreme Court, the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court, and lower federal and state courts have all rejected as illegal public takings for a private purpose. I would much prefer to see our tax dollars fund fire trucks or social workers than to see tens or possibly hundreds of thousands of dollars used to defend the petitioner's article should be adopted by this body and enacted by the select board. Additionally, why would we want to enter into an adversarial relationship with an institution that is our largest taxpayer, a significant contributor to our emergency services, one of our largest employers, the source of countless community volunteers through the Center for Community Engagement, the preserver of open space, the source of significant contributions to our public schools, and one of the best friends and funders to local nonprofits like the Amherst Cinema Center and the Amherst ABC House? I ask you, where does this end? I'm sure that the Survival Center would make a lovely café. Perhaps the town could take that, sell it to a local restaurateur, and put it back on the tax rolls. The newly renovated Unitarian Church would also make a lovely discotheque. Perhaps we could take that and sell it to one of the local club owners. I mean, I love Amherst College's new downtown building, and I think it would be a perfect location for my green business, but is that a reasonable way to proceed? I would say to you that you do not use a hatchet to remove the fly from the forehead of a friend, and that is what I believe this article would do. We simply cannot target properties for taking by eminent domain based on the tax status of their owners. I urge you to oppose this article, and I thank you for your time.
Yes, back corner over there.
Richard Morris, precinct seven. I called the previous question.
Most previous questions have been made and seconded. We will now come to an immediate vote. If two-thirds of you vote yes, we will then come to a vote on whether to accept the substitute motion. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Moderator, here's two-thirds. We now come to an immediate vote on the motion to amend the main motion. So a yes vote means that what you, let me finish first, and then I'll take a point of order if you have one still. We are now coming to a vote on whether or not to accept this substitute motion that you see before you on the screen. This is a simple majority. A yes means that this will be what's on the floor and what we're voting on. A no means that the motion in terms of the article will be on the floor and what we're voting on. Are there any questions about what we're voting on next? Good. Do you have a point of order? Microphone, please, down in this corner here. Microphone, please, down in this corner here.
Could, could we have counsel comment on that last statement about how we would be...
No, we, sorry, we cannot. That's not a, you can ask me if you have a point of order, if you have a question about a proceeding, so you can't ask for someone else to speak. So what's your question?
My question is, is do we know for sure how much legal hot water we would be in?
Okay, that isn't, I'm sorry, but that is not a point of order. That's up for debate. So it's not a point of order, I'm not going to accept it as a point of order. Okay? And no, I'm not accepting anything else from anybody unless it's a point of order about proceedings. We are now coming to vote on whether to accept this as our motion on the floor. All those in favor of accepting the substitute motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no.
No.
The noes have it.
No.
Okay. Can I, before we have a call for a tally, can I remind people of what we're voting on? We're voting on which is the motion that we will end up voting on under Article 38. This is not the vote on Article 38. I'm going to ask for a voice vote again, and everyone speak in a nice, moderate tone of voice, and this is just whether or not to accept the amended motion. All those in favor of accepting the amended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
I doubt it too. Let's have a standing vote, please. All those in favor of accepting the amended motion, please rise and remain standing. Let's do this quickly. You may be seated on the left. On the right, there are 27 yes votes. You may be seated on the right. You may be seated in the center. All those opposed to accepting the substitute motion, please rise and remain standing. You may be seated on the left. In the center, there are 12 no votes. You may be seated in the center. On the right, there are 16 no votes. You may be seated on the right. We have 92 votes yes, 46 no. This passes. What you see before you on the screen is now the motion on the floor. This will require a two-thirds vote to pass. Is there further discussion before we come to a vote? Yes over there first.
Jim Oldham, Precinct 5. Just clarification on whether this is legal or not. I, I refer you to Kilo versus New London. I happen to have grown up in New London. My father was on the losing side of a, an attempt to save a neighborhood that was taken by the Redevelopment Authority of New London for economic development, transferred to Pfizer Pharmaceutical. It was upheld by the Supreme Court five to four. I don't say it was a good decision, but it was a Supreme Court decision. Kilo versus New London. The previous speaker who said this is illegal is wrong. This has been upheld by the Supreme Court, and doing it in the case of Amherst in order to preserve properties on the tax roll strikes me as a much higher social good than taking people's homes to give it to a pharmaceutical company for redevelopment, which by the way, never happened, and that property is houseless and empty in New London. So, Kilo versus New London is the correct answer? Yes, this is legal?
Yes, right there in the center.
Claire Bertrand, Precinct 8. That opinion gestated may be true regarding the legal aspect. I still feel like this is the wrong thing to do. I'd like to hear from neighbors who live on that street. We're encouraging development, a real change in use possibly, on property that's outside, in a neighborhood and outside of the downtown, more in a quiet street that, if I lived there, I'm not sure how I would feel about this. I wish we could hear from somebody that lives on that street. Either way, the college is going to continue to use this building in the way it has been used. There will not be, you know, economic forces came to bear and a long-term auto industry moved on and left the area. They're all on King Street in Northampton. I don't want King Street in Northampton on Dickinson Street. But either way, the, you know, this town meeting has been asked to purchase a lot of things, and I'm not sure how to prioritize them all, but I certainly wouldn't put buying an old car dealership at the top of my list for our values and how to spend our money. I'm going to vote no on this.
Quick public service announcement, there's a blue Toyota Corolla out in the parking lot that has its lights on, plates BV741A. And Ms. Brewer.
So I mentioned earlier that obviously we hadn't seen this version, and now that we're voting on this version, some of my previous speech applies and some of it doesn't. The basic gist of it, other than our current working relationship with Amherst College, Hampshire College, and UMass, and how we continue to view that relationship, is critically important to us. But in terms of us buying land, this is a, while it may theoretically be legal, it is a very unprecedented move by this town meeting, and so I would just want you to look at that very carefully. We generally consider having our town buy land, not to transfer it to somebody else who's going to pay taxes, but buy it in order to protect it for conservation purposes, to provide passive or active recreational opportunities, to create affordable housing, or, in some cases, all three, like our Hawthorne Meadow project that we approved, thanks to all of you, on East Pleasant Street. We don't generally buy it for economic development, that's speaking more to the original article, but, you know, we don't have a purpose for doing this other than the theory of putting it back on the tax rolls. That feels like a very different sort of action as a town. Never mind our good relationship with Amherst College. It seems like an unnecessary thing to have as a tool in our toolbox. Thank you.
Third row in the blue shirt, right there.
Mr. Moderator, my name is Bernie Kubikak, I'm in Precinct 8, and I'd like to echo some of the words of the previous speaker from, from Precinct 8 in arguing in opposition to this. For the Select Board to take a piece of property by eminent domain or to buy a piece of property, they have to declare, they have to make a declaration of uniqueness. Any declaration of uniqueness that they might make, might dream up for this piece of property, has been stripped away by the statement that was made, that this is on the, on the board here purely as a negotiating tool with Amherst College. So should the college object to the town taking their property, which they likely would, and we end up in court, and I've been in court over eminent domain takings, the previous, one of the previous speakers has not, guess what's going to be introduced as evidence, that this was frivolous, and that the college was injured. And if this was an intent to build a relationship with Amherst College and to negotiate with Amherst College, that's also been damaged by the words that have been spoken this evening, that we need to have a threat to go into negotiations. There are any number of communities in the, in the Commonwealth where 20% or more of the property is held by tax-exempt organizations. Northampton is one, Worcester is another, Boston is another, Springfield is another. We'd be much better served by encouraging our elected officials and our very competent town manager to get together, to work with the legislature, to come up with some ways of clarifying when pilot agreements are in order with non-for-profit organizations. Rather than pulling a stunt like this, or like a stunt that was pulled in Holly where they went to the appellate tax board over a $117 tax bill, this is damaging, it's unfortunate, it's uncalled for. Please vote no.
Yes, right there in the center.
Mary Street, Precinct 8. I'd like clarification on the zoning for this parcel. I believe it's commercial, but I'd like to have that confirmed by town staff. Also, on June 2nd, we're going to be considering Article 20C, which is to convey property to a private developer for affordable housing purposes. And I see this in a very similar light to that, so I support this.
Mr. Masanti?
Yeah, the property on College Street is commercially zoned. And just a point of correction, on Article 23, which is the CPA article related to using funds from CPA for affordable housing purposes to assist in the acquisition by a, by a, a private buyer of, of rolling green apartments, there's no conveyance of land on the part of the town or town meeting there. But I do, if I may, I do want to respond to some of the questions about what are the legal issues here. I have talked with town council about this article, and what he has said to me is that if there is a public purpose related to taking of a property by eminent domain, then that is a more defensible position. The quite legitimate question, though, on the floor is, is the town taking a property and turning around and selling it for a profit, which is what the article would accomplish as amended, recovering a minimum of the cost paid in to acquire the property? I think what is guaranteed here is there would be additional legal costs incurred on the part of the town if we were to proceed on this course. In terms of the larger issue, the town is not thinking about beginning a dialogue with Amherst College. The dialogue goes back generations. I would, I'd like to argue that that relationship is getting stronger, and I believe it's gotten stronger in the past four or five years. We have partnered with Amherst College, they have partnered with us and the, and the wider community on economic development-related issues by joining with university and the town and business property owners in the downtown in the creation of a business improvement district. A very unique partnership with the college investing both financial resources as well as leadership from the college on the Board of Directors, because they have a, a active concern, invested interest in the health of our entire community and the health of our downtown. They've invested millions of dollars, both on their own campus, but also out into the community on things like the Lord Jeffrey Inn, which serves as a hub in, in the center of our town. They've given money since 2008 in an unrestricted fashion to the town that we've been able to use to support our fire and ambulance services. It just strikes me, quite frankly, that the petition article seems to be a solution in search of a problem. Yes, we need to be talking about Amherst College when there's property being acquired that's on the open market for sale to any buyer, and we are continuing our efforts to work with them on economic development, open space preservation, civic engagement, of which there's many examples. I know when this petition article was discussed at the Select Board, as amended or not, there was really some fundamental concerns expressed about the wisdom of having a relationship where it's appropriate for take, to take property by, by, by force, and I would just urge town meeting to not support this article. Thank you.
Yes, right here in the front row.
Larry Kelly, Precinct 5. Mr. Moderator, I have a motion.
What's your motion?
Move to dismiss.
Motion has been made to dismiss. It's a valid legal motion to be made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
You may speak to your motion.
Yes, that's a no with an exclamation point, by the way. So I like the, the analogy a town meeting member used earlier, that eminent domain is the use of a nuclear bomb. It really is. It should be used as a last resort, and it should be used with a great amount of forethought, neither of which do I see in this amended motion that was just suddenly amended, what, 25 minutes ago. Amherst College, as Mr. Poehler told you on Monday night, they pay us 400, they paid us $496,000 last year on the 44 houses that they own in town and rent to their esteemed professors, but also the Lord Jeffrey Inn, and you forgot to mention, Mr. Town Manager, that they also pay on their golf course, unlike our golf course. That is on, that is on the tax rolls as well. In addition, they do pay us the $90,000 per year, but back in 2007, they actually paid us $120,000. I like to refer to it as PILOT, P-I-L-O-T, payment lieu of taxes. That's what UMass calls their 325,000. Amherst College doesn't like to call it that, they like to call it a gift. Hey, I don't care, they pay us 90 grand this year, that's great. They also paid, I don't think anybody's mentioned, 75,000 to the school system as well. So, I mean, if you're going to pick on somebody, why not go after Hampshire College? They don't pay us anything. UMass pays us 325. As I said, Amherst College pays us 90 plus 75 to the schools, plus 496 in taxes. Last year, Amherst College absorbed 4% of the AFD runs for police, I mean for fire and ambulance. Hampshire College absorbed 3%, so roughly the same. They don't pay us anything. So again, this is no way to treat your friend. And, and I've been a critic for 15 years. I'm, I think I'm the first one ever in the history of this town to use the word "tax-exempt" on the floor of town meeting, like 25 years ago, and everybody gave me a funny look, like, what the heck is a tax-exempt? And as I've said many times, half the property in this town is owned by tax-exempts, Amherst College being number one, but I just outlined all the positive things they do. And that church, yeah, I was a big critic when they took that two years ago, but it's a beautiful building. It looked like yuck two and a half, three years ago. Now it looks like a good building. It was originally valued at a million, so it only paid the town, I think $14,000, something like that. They paid 2 million for it, they can afford to, but it, now it's off the tax rolls, but it only paid us a few thousand dollars. So I think all the positive things they do way more than outweighed, and this thing is absurd. I mean, this will be on the AP tomorrow, and we don't need that with our friends. Thank you.
Motion on the floor is now motion to dismiss, which is a majority vote. If the motion to dismiss passes, we move on to the next article. If it fails, we are back to the amended motion, which you see on the screen here. Is there further discussion? I just do want to remind people, discussion is one of the duties of town meeting, and voting is another duty of town meeting. Yes, in the back corner there.
Vince O'Connor, Precinct 1. I oppose the motion to dismiss, obviously, and I, I wonder why it would be made in the face of the previous vote. I think that, again, regarding the legal issues, that only, that discussion really takes... takes place before the Select Board, if they choose in open session, as they would have to, to put this item on their agenda for a decision. And with regard to comments that are made in this town meeting, since I've, we went through litigation over a previous zoning vote maybe 15 years ago, town meeting members are members of a legislative body. They are immune not only from, but from deposition.
Do we not have a clock running here?
That's not.
Okay. He should, give him two more minutes.
Yeah, that's fine. So what we say on the floor of town meeting is privileged. We can't be questioned in any other place. We were assigned the duty to deal with the town's business by the legislature according to rules that they have set forth, and their immunity devolves upon us, and we can't be questioned for what we say here. The Select Board being, partly because we're such a large body, the Select Board being five people, what they say on, in their discussion about whether to execute this, to act in accordance with this article, would, might be a different matter. But they would have legal advice, and they would probably not enter upon it without a lot of consideration and a lot of legal thinking. So we're not bound by that. We are simply assigning to them the responsibility to look into this, to take action if they choose to do so. We are doing nothing more or less than that. And how they deal, I just think that we, we have to draw the line someplace with regard to the acquisition of tax-paying property, whether it's by UMass or Amherst College. The latest event is the one by Amherst College. And I think this is a perfectly sound, legal, and wise action to take. And so I urge people to defeat the motion to dismiss and to vote for the amended motion on the floor.
Yes, in the blue right there.
Janewald, Precinct One. I have four or five little things to say. First of all, I agree with a previous speaker that this, this is a frivolous motion, a frivolous petition. It sets a really bad precedent to have the town manipulating property ownership in this way, and it is a manipulation. The Select Board has stated that it opposes this article. Why would they act on this, even if we authorize them to do so? I think it also establishes the town's and the town meeting's bad faith in entering any negotiation of any sort with Amherst College. In no way does it enhance our relationship with one of our largest and best neighbors. As a citizen, I want our town to spend its time and effort dealing with our real problems. One is, of course, a housing crisis, and another is perhaps a better, more comprehensive way to deal with encouraging a business tax base rather than this somewhat rifle-shot approach.
Yes, you may stand and wait for a microphone or pass on the microphone for a point of order.
Thank you. Louis Greenbaum, Precinct One. The speaker currently is an employee of Amherst College, and that's actually made-
Sorry, I'm sorry, sir. That is not a point of order. I'm sorry. She's, she's speaking here as a member of town meeting, and she's entitled to speak. So please pass her the microphone back.
Well, then, perhaps my last point is just to draw attention to a little historical fact. When Amherst College was established in 1821, it was the practice of students to live with families in town. We could all think about that as one way to solve our housing crisis.
Another, yet another car with its lights on, beige Subaru Legacy station wagon, 2106TS. If it's yours, turn your lights off. Yes, right there in the center.
Meg Gage, Precinct One. I want to encourage town meeting members not to make parliamentarian procedures that are intended to kind of put an exclamation point on their position and to take another vote. And in fact, it's only a majority vote to dismiss, I believe, and two-thirds to, and only one-third can stop this from passing. So in fact, it's taking all of our time and actually making it harder for somebody who opposes this to defeat it. And, you know, I think people can make exclamation points about how strongly they feel in the comments that they make about the article.
Thank you. Are we ready to come to a vote? I see a hand. There.
Yeah, Kenton Thar, Precinct One. I, I don't think we should dismiss it, but I do think we should vote for the final article. That's why I don't think we should dismiss it. And I think we're getting a little sidetracked here around friends and eminent domain. You know, friendship goes both ways. We've done a lot for Amherst College, they do a lot for us, and really, this vote has, I don't think it really has hardly anything to do with friendship. Really has to do with business. Amherst College is, you know, wants to maximize its use of its power and its force, which is pretty mighty, and they have a lot of money, and so, you know, that's, it's like, you know, if this is what they want to do, because this is what they think is best for their interests, that's fine. But at the same time, we have to protect our own interests, and that's really what this is a vote about. Do we want to protect our own interests in terms of development in the town and control over certain things? And I don't think it's going to affect friendship. I mean, you know, we're both two people, mature boards and people that can negotiate in good faith, you know, and not, not run friendships over, over a business deal. And eminent domain is not required here. It's just given that force and that power, that possibility, but, you know, to think of it as, as something we're going to go into at all costs and spend a lot of money trying to defend a position we have, I don't, you know, I think our town officials can be trusted a lot more than that. And this, the whole idea of this is it's not going to cost us anything. You know, the idea is it's going to try and preserve some tax base, which is in our best interest. And I find it interesting to find people who are always talking about trying to preserve our tax base and bring more business to town and do all this, somehow or another feel this isn't the right way to do it. And, you know, we don't have to go to court over anything here. It's just giving us a right to try and protect our own interests and against possibly the interest of Amherst College, which is just trying to protect their own interest. So I don't think it's, I think we're getting a little off the track here, and the decision is, is this good for our town? And I think the friendship, this eminent domain stuff is kind of side issues that really don't apply here significantly.
Yes, all the way in the back there in the red. Motion for the previous question has been made and seconded. We will now come to an immediate vote on whether or not to end debate and come to a vote on the motion on the floor, which is the motion to dismiss. But first, the motion for the previous question requires two-thirds. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
Moderator here is two-thirds. The vote before us is now the vote to dismiss, which requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion to dismiss Article 38, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
Moderators in doubt, we will have a standing vote. If I see 15 hands in the next five seconds, one, two, we will have a tally vote, so now everybody needs to... I need everybody to pay attention here, so we get this right. We will be using tally card number five. Must have the number five and your name on it. If you did not bring your card with you, you must get a blank card. You must, you must stay in your seat until your card is collected and your row has been released by the teller. If you leave your row before the teller releases you, your vote will not be counted. You may now pass in your votes. Just want to clarify, a yes vote is a yes to dismiss Article 38. A no vote is to continue debate on Article 38. The tally vote is 81 yes and 72 no. The motion to dismiss has passed. We move on to Article 40. I call on Mr. O'Connor to make a motion.
Mr. Moderator, as I, as I said to you before, I have a procedural motion.
You may make it.
I'd like to ask the town meetings to take up Article 41 before Article 40. I'd like to ask the town meetings to take up Article 41 before Article 40.
Do I hear a second? Motion is made and seconded to hear Article 41 before 40. Just switch the order of the two. You may speak to your motion.
Most of the information about the Section 8 program that will inform Article 40 will be contained in the presentation on Article 41. So it makes sense to do them in the reverse order on which they appear on the warrant.
Is there discussion or are we ready to come to a vote? Let's vote. All those in favor of hearing Article 41 prior to Article 40, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Mr. O'Connor, I recognize you now to make a motion under Article 41.
I move in terms of the article.
I hear a second. You may speak to your motion.
Article 41 concerns a piece of state legislation, House 1167, filed by Representative Chris Walsh of Framingham. Mr. Walsh is an architect and a supporter of affordable housing. His purpose is to make sure that a town's receptiveness to affordable housing gets an accurate count. One of the things that is not counted now, the largest component of affordable housing that does not receive a count, is the number of Section 8 voucher holders, federal voucher holders, that are able to find housing in a town. Now, there were two issues that were raised about this proposal. The first, I think, can be easily disposed of. That was the idea that somehow the boards and committees, those of us who have served on boards and committees, the members of town meeting who support affordable housing, will somehow slack off in their efforts and that our resolve to improve our affordable housing situation in terms of providing housing for families would be less. I do not believe that for a minute. I think it was unfortunate that the committee that presented that argument did so. I don't think it is a good evaluation of this town's commitment or of the commitment of the individuals who serve on boards and committees or who are part of volunteer agencies at all. So the second issue that was presented was, how do we get an accurate count? There's a simple answer to that question, and both Representative Walsh and myself discussed it at some length. The answer is simple, that every month, housing authorities send out checks to landlords who rent to Section 8 tenants. One of the great things about having local housing authorities with sufficient staff to monitor their tenants and the landlords who rent to them, and why I'm opposed to these super-regional housing authorities, one of the reasons to have local housing authorities is because they keep track of who is in place and who they're writing checks to, because these checks involve large sums of money. And quite frankly, the housing authorities are audited, and the last thing they want to find out is that they've been sending a check to a landlord for a tenant that has gone nine months ago. So we have an accurate count from the Amherst Housing Authority, and in fact, the meetings last fall that took place about the various issues that were before the Amherst Housing Authority, at every different meeting we had, the housing authority was able to tell those who were present how many tenants they had, how many tenants they'd lost from attrition, and so forth. And the reason they could do that is because they keep an accurate count because of those checks they send out every month. The other two agencies that subsidize Section 8 tenants in the town of Amherst are HAP and the Franklin County Housing Authority. Remarkably enough, Amherst is in the Franklin County Housing Authority's catchment district. They do have Section 8 tenants in Amherst. In fact, one of the reasons I know is because I know an individual who has a Section 8 from Franklin County Housing Authority because they have a home purchasing program which the Amherst Housing Authority doesn't. Those two agencies also keep good records of which landlords they send out checks to, where those apartments are located. So we have three agencies that probably subsidize ninety to ninety-five percent of the Section 8 tenants in Amherst. Those agencies are all available to us, and this is a real situation where the perfect is, in fact, the enemy of the good. Because we can't get a hundred percent doesn't mean we shouldn't accept the ninety-five percent. We should vote for this. We should urge this upon our legislators. This would be a good thing for the town of Amherst. It would give us breathing room, and it would also facilitate some of much more thoughtful and long-range planning in terms of keeping above the ten percent. Thank you.
And Mr. Steinberg for the Select Board.
I request two additional minutes.
Without objection, granted.
Thank you. I want to start just with a personal note. For those of you who've only seen me over the years and my role as Chair of the Finance Committee, before I was on the Finance Committee, for twenty-six years, I was Director of the Local Legal Aid Program, and for eight years before that, I was Legal Aid Attorney in another state. So I have about thirty-five years of experience as an advocate for low-income people, often on housing issues and affordable housing. So this is something that I really have worked on for a substantial portion of my career. I also have been involved in lobbying, both in the Massachusetts Legislature and in the legislature where I first worked, where I was lobbying on housing legislation. So I just wanted to give you that context before I start speaking on what's before us. The state Affordable Housing Law, Chapter 40B, is one of the most important tools for the creation of affordable housing in Massachusetts. It's been the creation of over sixty thousand units since its passage in 1969. Affordable units have been created in Amherst as a result of the law. Couple of examples, 1987, through negotiations with the town, Mill Valley Estates was built with one hundred and forty-eight apartments, forty percent of which are affordable. The development included a million-dollar contribution for a signalized intersection at Route 116 and repairs to the pedestrian bridge to Goff Park. Most recently, Olympia Oaks used 40B to build forty-two affordable rental housing units on town land near the university. We have recognized the need for affordable housing in order to assure that we remain a community that is diverse, including economic diversity. Young families need affordable housing to live in Amherst. The 2013 Housing Market Study found that Amherst does not have an efficient mix of housing. Chapter 40B is a tool that enables us to enlarge housing opportunities and encourages our communities, other communities, to do so. Chapter 40B sets a threshold for all municipalities. The threshold is ten percent of housing stock should be affordable to households below eighty percent of the area's median income. To assist in realizing this threshold, a housing development that has at least twenty-five percent of the units affordable may be allowed a waiver under local zoning laws in communities that don't meet the threshold. As of November 2013, forty-four communities have met that ten percent goal, and Amherst is one of them. We think Amherst benefits when all communities in the Commonwealth are doing their fair share of building the affordable housing people need. House Bill 1167 proposes to include housing voucher programs, Section 8 certificates, as participants in the way that affordable housing units are counted. That proposal is bad housing policy, and we should not be supporting the weakening of the state's Affordable Housing Law. And I say that it is weakening because it will ultimately reduce the real count of what are affordable housing units in a community without doing anything to actually increase the number of affordable units of housing in the community. It does nothing to build communities. We know that most rental vouchers are portable, and this was something that was referred to by the previous speaker, and that they go to the tenant household. Tenants need to find apartments that rents that the federal government will allow. If there is an inadequate supply of affordable housing, there won't be any rental units available for the people who need them. So the development is an issue that we need to keep an eye on. House Bill 1167 does nothing to create new affordable housing units. It is often hard to garner support in local communities for Chapter 40B, and there have been a number of bills that have sought to weaken Chapter 40B. And some people look at this kind of a proposal to change the counting mechanism as one of those mechanisms that weakens the statute itself. Representative Walsh's bill was also considered in the last legislative session, 2011-12. It did not come out of committee. It was referred for study, which is the legislative way of saying, "We're not interested in having this come to the floor." This year's bill was filed in 2013, was sent to committee, and there was a hearing scheduled, but there's been no report issued. As noted, Amherst has had good results from Chapter 40B developments, and we have a strong interest in seeing its continuation. Counting vouchers as affordable housing is, at that point, questionable as to why the policy is being proposed. And I would urge you to consider that very carefully and that we not ask our legislators, one of whom is about to be President of the Senate, to support a bill that would got one of the most valuable affordable housing bills that exists in this Commonwealth. Thank you.
And Mr. Sharma for the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee voted to take no position on this article by a vote of four to one, with one person absent. The majority view was that counting Section 8 vouchers toward Chapter 40B, affordable housing, would limit the marginal incentive for the town to continue efforts towards building additional affordable housing. The minority position, you will hear directly.
Mr. Slaughter.
I was the no vote. The committee made no recommendation. I thought we should make a recommendation. That was the primary thing I was thinking. With regard to this, I do think it has a financial implication to the town. As stated by Mr. Steinberg, I think most of the points I would make would be those that he made, that there is a context of this, and to my mind, a negative impact on the town financially, but partly because of how it impacts the surrounding communities to us. I don't think that our community and our boards and committees would be diminished in their efforts towards creating affordable housing, but I do think the incentives in the other communities that neighbor us might be. And so I think that would have a financial impact on us, and I thought we, as a committee, should take a position.
Motion before us is a resolution. In terms of the article, it requires a majority vote to pass. Is there discussion before we come to a vote? Yes over there on the white shirt.
Caroline Murray, Precinct Four. First of all, I feel like I'm in the middle of a magical realism book where nothing is as it seems or should be. This bill that's being sponsored at the state level is by a rabid anti-affordable-housing person. A voucher is a voucher. It's not an apartment. There are many voucher holders in the town of Amherst who have to leave Amherst because, as many of us here know, the payment standard is too low to be able to afford many of the apartments in Amherst. So people leave town, further contributing to the loss of families that we seem to care so much about. In the next two years, the state of Massachusetts is slated to lose upwards of fifteen thousand affordable housing units, like Rolling Green. We need to preserve affordable housing units and use every tool in the toolkit that will enable us to do that, including 40B, which will help us develop new affordable housing as we lose the stock that we already have. A voucher is a piece of paper. It is not affordable housing. Please do not support this warrant amendment, whatever it's called, and do not support this bill that's being sponsored at the State House by a rabid anti-affordable-housing person. Thank you.
Mr. O'Connor.
I disagree with the speakers who characterize both the sponsor of the legislation and the way it measures Amherst. In fact, the fact that we have about two hundred Section 8 voucher holders in the town of Amherst, as stated by the Amherst Housing Authority, is an indication that at least some of our rental housing is still affordable and open to Section 8 voucher holders. I think the last thing we want to have in this town is that the only place that low-income families can live are in Mill Valley and so forth. One of the reasons to have the Section 8 program is so that people can be distributed throughout the town in different locations, in single-family homes.
I hear a... I'm giving him a little leeway. He is discussing Section 8 and Chapter 40B, so I'm going to let him speak.
So the number of voucher holders in a town with respect to the number of housing units is an indication of the number of rental units that remain affordable. I think it is deplorable that a number of years ago, before the university increased its admissions, we had close to four hundred voucher holders, and those individuals have been lost to the town because they've been pushed out by the increased rents caused by the university's admissions policies. One of the things accounting voucher holders would do is it would bring us into dialogue with the landlords in town. It would give us an incentive to be talking to them about where they set their rents and who they can rent to and so forth. It would do the exact opposite of what the speakers against this proposal have said. We need to be engaged with everyone in this town who is involved in the rental housing market, not just people who have embedded units in their projects. That's a way to essentially get to the point where we not only get under ten percent, but we fail to house all the families that we could house if we were proactive with those who rent housing in the town of Amherst.
Yes right here, second row, green shirt.
Abby Jensen, Precinct Four, called the previous question.
Motion for the previous question has been made and seconded. We will now come to an immediate vote requiring two-thirds. If that passes, we will then come to a vote on the main motion under Article 41. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question... All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, please say no.
No.
We're going to try it again, nice modulated voice. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
Moderator, here's two-thirds. We will now come to an immediate vote on... Somebody doubts it, we have to count. Standing vote. You may be seated on the right. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please rise and remain standing. On the left, there are 31 yes votes. You may be seated on the left. All those opposed to the motion for the previous question, please rise and remain standing. You may be seated on the left. On the right, there are six no votes. In the center, there are 26 no votes. You may be seated in the center. We have 95 vote yes, 47 votes no. We have not achieved a two, I mean, we have achieved a two-thirds, I'm sorry. So the motion for the previous question has passed. Again, that was 95 yes, 47 no. We will now come to an immediate vote on the, on, hang on a second, yes, on Article 41, which requires a majority. Everybody with me? The motion was in terms of the article. All those in favor of the motion under Article 41, please say yes. I mean, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All those in favor of Article 41, that really confused you. All those in favor of Article 41, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
The noes have it, only require a majority. We now move to Article 40. Yes, we now move to Article 40. No, I'm sorry, the vote is already been declared. You can't call a tally after that. We now move on to Article 40. Mr. O'Connor, make a motion.
Okay, I move in terms of the article.
Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to your motion.
Okay, Vince O'Connor, Precinct 1. Article 40 comes out of those discussions that happened last fall with the Amherst Housing Authority. During one of the meetings, a suggestion was made that the Housing Authority ought to be in negotiation with landlords and asked landlords to reduce their rents. As that discussion took place before the Housing Authority, I talked to folks who were at the meeting and said, "We need to have a way, to develop a way to have a balanced shouldering of the burden of keeping Section 8 tenants in the town of Amherst." The entire burden can't be left to the Amherst Housing Authority and to the, and to HUD because of the restrictions that money involves. The burden can't be placed entirely on landlords. They are not going to accept that level of burden. This petition proposes that we do something that essentially involves burden sharing. A landlord who reduced their rents below the level of rent that was charged for, in the case of a single property, where the standard rent could be determined by the Board of Assessors, or a landlord who had multiple properties where there were units similar or identical, and reduced their rent to accommodate a Section 8 tenant, would qualify for up to $1,000 in a tax credit. These, this tax credit would be available upon application, wouldn't be given out unless an application was made. The credit would be for 75% of the reduction, or $1,000, whichever is less. The credit would be year to year based on the landlord having a contract with the tenant that could be provided to the assessors but kept confidential. During my discussion with the Finance Committee, the point was made by a member of the Finance Committee that this approach would be more cost beneficial over the long term than what was then proposed for Rolling Green. Now, I support Rolling Green, the appropriation. I plan to vote for it on June 2nd. But it is true that we are preserving, and we will be asked to preserve 42 units at Rolling Green for $1.25 million on June 2nd, whereas for $50,000 a year, we, we may be able to persuade a sufficient number of landlords to keep their doors open to Section 8 tenants, up to, up to 50 households or families. That's what this article is about. The article is a request to the legislature. The, the upper limit of the amount is taken from the tax credits that are currently managed by the Board of Assessors. I did ask a meeting of the Board of Assessors whether the, the issue of determining the, the normal rental levels would be a problem for a unit that was individual, held by a single person, no identical unit being held by the same landlord. They do that all the time. Part of how they assess is by the, the cost, but usually for larger complexes. So this is a simple, straightforward request for legislation. It may not come back to us, and is unlikely to come back to us in exactly this form, but it indicates an interest in having in the town to keep the doors open in this town for Section 8 tenants, to use this tool, among others, to do that, and I urge your support for it. Thank you.
And Mr. Steinberg for the Select Board.
Yes, thank you. There are three things, three points that I want to make. First, to relate to the question of the underlying question itself, what would we do if this authority were to come back to us? Would it be a good policy? And I want to raise two, those two points for you to consider. Tax credits that we provide diminish town revenue by the amount, in this case, that the Finance Committee estimates between $50,000 and $200,000. Property tax credits are equivalent to tax credits that Congress gives to some taxpayers. They are referred to as tax expenditures. Town meetings should consider carefully the, the grant of credits and do so as carefully as it would consider the expenditure of money directly because it comes out of the same place. Once established, these credits would likely continue as an annual expenditure. Paragraph C of this motion would include as possible sources for funds, rental, housing, permit fees, general revenues, and CPAC funds. The first two are the sources for the budget you approve at town meeting, and they would, if this were done, it would diminish funds that were available for what we're doing now or other initiatives that we might undertake. CPA funds are considered annually for unique initiatives in conservation, housing, and community preservation, things that cannot be funded through the annual budget process. The suggestion treats CPA funds as general funds. Secondly, this is not an efficient way to use funds to promote affordable housing. In addition to the cost of the tax credit, there would be a significant and unknown cost to administer the program. Credits might go to some property owners who would continue to accept Section 8 and veteran housing programs without this program. It would be unfair to property owners who now charge rents that provide housing to Section 8 tenants and might encourage some to raise rents or evict tenants so that they can seek future tax credits for what they're already doing now. This would do nothing to create new housing. And the third point is that this article is a request to the legislature for authorizing legislation. We ask our senator and representative to do a lot for us. We ask them to support state funding for unrestricted general government aid, education, library funding, and payments in lieu of taxation on state-owned land. We ask them to support our request to allow non-citizens to vote in local elections, and they've tried. We need to respect, be respectful, and consider our ask carefully and be strategic in deciding when to ask. We should not seek enabling legislation unless we intend to follow through. For the first two reasons I've explained, this is not something we can or should do, and therefore, it's not advisable to seek enabling legislation. Thank you.
And Mr. Slaughter for the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee voted four to one, with one member absent, to not recommend this to you, primarily for the reasons that Mr. Steinberg just stated, as far as the reasons not to recommend. I will state that for the person who was the dissenting vote, they felt that the, that the proposal was not, was, it had financial merit, and that it should be studied further. The committee as a whole, though, did not want to recommend this.
This is a resolution which will require a majority vote to pass. Is there discussion before we come to a vote? Yes, I see a hand there.
Tracy Lee Butillier, Precinct 6. I have a question, moderator. Is it possible to make a motion to amend part of this article?
Yes, you can make a motion to amend. You would have to do that now, and it would have to be something in writing.
Okay. Do I need to say it or just write it out?
You need to make your motion, yes.
Okay. I move that, in the fourth paragraph, fourth section down, that the wording be changed to, let's see, at the last, it's in the last instance on where the, who determines the fair market rental. So I would move that the Amherst Board of Assessors be strucken out and the Amherst Housing Authority rent, using the rent reasonableness procedure be, be put in place.
I do not think that motion is in order. Why don't you come up here and show it to me, so I can really understand and decide? But I think replacing one group with another group is going to be outside the scope of that article, and of therefore, the motion. on the main motion, which is in terms of the article. Is there discussion? Are we ready to come to a vote? Um, I s, yes, I see a hand in the back there.
Jerry Weiss, Precinct 8. Uh, I move to refer this article to the Housing and Sheltering Committee.
Motion has been made.
I move to refer this article to the Housing and Sheltering Committee.
Motion has been made to refer the article to the Housing and Sheltering Committee. You may speak to the motion. I just want to say first, when a motion is made to refer something that does not require the board it's referred to to consider it, is just saying town meeting is asking them to consider it, but it's not a legal obligation on their part to do it. You may speak to your motion.
Um, I believe there is some merit to this article. I think it's very complicated. I and a few other people tried to work on a similar, um, article several months ago and got overwhelmed with the complications. Um, I would like to see if the Housing and Sheltering Committee, um, in conjunction, possibly with the town manager, with their, uh, finance director and, uh, assessor, could make some, something out of this. Possibly it can't be done, um, but I'd like them to take a look at it and see if there's anything that could be done with it. I think it's very complicated, and I don't think we're ready to, um, vote on it tonight.
Okay, the motion before us is now a motion to refer to the Housing and Sheltering Committee. This also requires a majority vote. If it passes, we've disposed of Article 40. If it fails, then the main motion is back on the floor. Is there discussion on the motion to refer? Um, yes, way in the back corner there. Um, I'm not going to accept a, a call the question as the first thing after a motion is made, unless I'm sure there's no other, other discussion, okay? Um, yes, right there.
Bonnie McCracken, Precinct 6, and, um, I support referring it to the Housing and Sheltering Committee, because I was also part of that group, um, that put this warrant article together. And the reason why it was being proposed was so that we could get everybody to the table to talk about this issue. And I realize that many of our landlords, this is their source of income, and as a business owner myself, I respect that, that that's their income. But this is a community, and shall I say, it takes a village. So I would really support people, I would appreciate it if people would support this to being referred to the Housing and Sheltering Committee, so that we can explore it further, because it was also talked about, that if we designed it similar to our land tax, uh, Chapter 61, or agricultural land tax lien 61B, that this actually might work. Uh, so I would really like for people to refer it back, and so that we can explore it further and bring it back in the fall. Thank you.
Okay, we, okay, Ms. Brewer.
I, I don't believe anyone from the Housing and Sheltering Committee could be here tonight, and I just wanted to mention that they had put this in the town meeting mailing number two, before we knew the numbering of the articles, and they'd made the state, they'd made a statement in regards to their not supporting the article. So obviously, town meeting can vote to refer, and as the moderator said, the committee can choose whether or not to take action on it, but they had concerns, which I will read very quickly. "The committee voted unanimously five to zero to not support this article, expressing concern that it was convoluted and difficult to understand, and it would set up a program that is complicated to manage. The article does not encourage the development of new housing units, and there are simpler solutions, such as establishing a local voucher program that could accomplish a similar goal."
Thank you. Um, yes, right there?
Maureen Adams, Precinct 10. Uh, this is a comment and a question. Uh, it, the question is, since we, uh, to make an argument to refer this, we do not need to specify the group to whom we're referring. Is that correct?
Um, no, that is not correct. When you refer something, it has to be to a specific board.
I understand. So if the group to whom we are referring it does not wish to consider it, would the town manager and Select Board and other groups consider the will of this group, uh, to take it up themselves?
Um, I can't answer that, but I don't think that's typically the case. But I don't know if the town manager wants to respond or not.
Let me just make the case, and then perhaps the town manager.
We understand your question, but, um, typically, um, referral is to the board it's referred to, and they're the ones who are going to consider it or not.
So then may I just quickly speak to the argument to refer. Uh, many of us who have been very concerned about affordable housing for many years have realized that this is an extraordinarily complicated problem. It involves affordable units, it involves vouchers, it involves the willingness of landlords, it involves provision of appropriate student housing, so that the market is not tilted toward off-campus, uh, expensive housing, uh, instead of those who, um, would need affordable housing. This issue of tax incentives has come up again and again and again, and I, I urge that appropriate bodies and town meeting, or representatives of town, consider how tax incentives can be used to forward the argument for affordable housing, which I believe is the purpose of this article, and would be the purpose of referring it to an appropriate group. Thank you.
Ready to come to a vote on motion refer? I see a hand right there in the center.
Janet McGowan, Precinct 8. I've often wondered why Amherst hasn't been a little more flexible with its own residential tax code. I moved here from Somerville. If you were, owned a house and it was, had a rental unit, there was almost a $2,000 tax break, because owner-occupied houses stabilized neighborhoods. And I've wondered why, if rental housing is creating kind of a burden on the town for a lot of reasons that have been discussed, why wouldn't you raise the tax rate on rental properties and maybe lower the tax rate? So I would urge people to be more flexible. Other cities and towns are, to achieve social or, you know, zoning goals, or, you know, town-wide goals.
Um, yes, over there in the corner.
Oldham, Precinct 5. I, I also am supporting the move to refer, and I, I want to encourage town meeting to, to, to recognize the, the value of the concept, even though there, there's a lot of devil in the details, uh, as, having also met with the manager and the assessor, and, and discussed this with others, and helped sort of contribute to these ideas. I'm not sure if everyone understands that there is, that Section 8 voucher holders are in a particularly challenging position. We live in a town where Section 8 vouchers are, are based on the Springfield, uh, area, and so we live in a town that is significantly higher rents than, than the entire geographic area in which, uh, vouchers are, are calculated and based. It makes it a real challenge for those voucher holders to, to, um, access the units. This idea came up when our Housing Authority, which has historically kept the rates for Amherst higher than the, the, the minimum that, that normally would apply, uh, in order so at least some voucher holders will be able to live in Amherst. The, it came up when the Housing Authority faced with, uh, a shortfall of federal funding, was talking about cutting that money, and the question was, how can the town support them? How can we get landlords to support them? And this concept, in its general form, is an idea of how we can use some town funds to leverage, uh, buy-in by landlords, and get, as someone earlier said, everyone supporting this, uh, such a thing. No, it doesn't create new units, but one, one point that needs to be made is voucher holders can't move into the affordable housing, the 40B affordable housing units, because they would have to give up their vouchers. And so you lose mobility, you lose a lot of flexibility, and it's a tough trade-off, and, and asking someone to give that up is tough. So sometimes they'll choose to move out of town rather, rather than that. In any case, we need both. We need the vouchers, we need the units. Voting this down is, is not acknowledging the importance of it. Voting to refer to the Ha, Housing and Sheltering Committee, I, I believe that the fact that they voted against the article as it currently stands is no reason to believe that they wouldn't want to think about it and work with, uh, town staff to come up with a good solution. And, and I must say, I want to say, we had a very nice, uh, helpful conversation with, with the manager when we talked about it, and I think that there is room to figure this thing out. Thank you.
Um, yes, right there.
Tracy Lee Butilier, Precinct 6. Um, a couple of comments I wanted to make. So, um, to say, you know, to speak to a, to a statement that was made, um, a little while ago, that this article is, you know, complicated and convoluted, and so therefore it's not supported. Um, it's complicated and it's convoluted, which is why, you know, if it gets referred, and we're asking more people to come to the table, it would be to kind of break that apart and suss it out, and make it clear and, and, um, workable. Um, also, this isn't unique. We do have it in other neighborhoods within our state, and other, you know, towns and cities. So it's doable, it's just how do we make this work for Amherst? One other comment that I'd like to point out is that Section 8 is only one type of housing assistance, one type of subsidy. It's federally funded. There are other types of housing assistance subsidies, and that are state-funded. So anytime we're talking about Section 8, we're talking about, if we're speaking about it in Amherst, Amherst Housing Authority has 413 approved vouchers. They're not all in use. I think we have about 392 in use right now. Maybe about 200 of those, approximately, are living in Amherst. The goal of the Section 8 program was to allow families to move out of state-subsidized, federally subsidized projects, where that subsidy only stayed with the apartment unit. This is allowing families to move into areas that have better school systems, you know, that have opportunities for employment, opportunities for nice neighborhoods and safe neighborhoods. So when a voucher holder moves into different neighborhoods, they're moving into housing that wasn't previously, um, accessible, because it wasn't subsidized. That voucher gives that subsidy to a standard unit that du, didn't have a subsidy before. So just, I just really wanted to try to clarify that and, and break some of this apart. They were only talking about a subsection of families that need affordable housing. Um, and, you know, I, I think it's a great way to, to break down some of the misconceptions, and, you know, offering landlords incentives. I, I think it's wonderful. I mean, that could be one method of starting a dialogue, starting communication, increasing some understanding, um, and I think that's very possible. Thank you.
See a hand down there, third row?
Molly Turner, Precinct 5. Mr. Moderator, I call the question.
A motion to the previous question has been made and seconded. We will now come to an immediate vote. If two-thirds of you vote yes, we will come to a vote on the main motion, which is the mo, I'm sorry, on the motion to refer. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. I hear two-thirds. We now come to a vote on the motion to refer Article 40 to the Housing and Sheltering Committee. This requires a majority. All those in favor of the motion to refer, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Article 40 is referred to the Housing and Sheltering Committee. We now move on to Article 42. I call on Mr. O'Connor to make a motion.
And I think there's at least a few people in the audience who might make sure that I make this referral to the proper organization. Um, and I move to refer this article to the Implementation Committee, um, for the rental registration, the Rental Registration Bylaw Implementation Committee. If I've, I think I'm at least close to the...
Okay. We need to be a little better than close here. So do you have that in writing, so we can look at it and determine if it's actually the name of the committee? Or just try again? I don't know who you're looking to, Mr. O'Connor. Could you have that motion in writing?
Well, I, I understood that motions to refer do not have to be in writing.
But we need to know specifically who you're referring it to.
Um, and I am referring it to the Implementation Committee for the Rental Registration, um, Program, and if, if that, I see a member of the committee nodding her head, so I assume I've gotten it right. And, um...
All right, so, the Implementation Committee for the Rental Registration Program, and Mr. Zandi, can you confirm that that's the committee name?
I have a lot of committees to keep track of. Uh, we have a, uh, a group that we've been calling the Implementation Group, staffed by our very able Building Commissioner, Rob Mora. Uh, in the, uh, early weeks and months of our implementation of the Rental Permitting Bylaw, the Implementation Group was pulled together, which included a, a tenant and, and several others. They have met multiple times in public meetings, and really worked with staff, uh, very specifically on things like the self-certification checklist that landlords are, are, uh, asked to review and certify as to the status of their property with various, uh, health and building codes, et cetera. Uh, I know from, uh, Mr. Mora that the group has been very helpful, uh, in assisting the, the rollout of, of this plan, and they're not going away. Uh, the group, uh, will continue to meet periodically as needed. Uh, and, uh, I know that, uh, all in the community who have an interest in this issue have been encouraged, uh, to be in touch directly, uh, with Mr. Mora as our point person on the, on the implement, specific, um, implementation, about any specific thought. So it's up to the wisdom of this body whether you, you feel it's ne, necessary to refer this article, but an alternative is to simply call Mr. Mora and talk about this issue, and even be asked to be placed on an upcoming agenda, about any, any issue related to the Rental Permit Bylaw implementation.
Okay, I'm gonna rule this valid to refer something to a committee. Is there a point of order regarding that? Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry. Uh, the, the point of, I should have made the point of order. I don't believe that we had a second to refer this question, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, well, I was still, I was still ruling on whether it's valid, so let me say, yes, it's valid, and you are correct. The next thing for me to say is, is there a second?
There is.
There is. Um, you may speak to your motion.
Briefly, Mr. Moderator. I appeared before this committee a few weeks ago. Um, we had a good discussion. Um, they, the committee seemed receptive to some of my concerns, um, about the implementation, and especially how the implementation might affect people who don't speak English, um, may not be legally present, and other things, which is not the purpose of what the Rental Registration Bylaw seeks to address. And they, they seem quite open to hearing concerns from, from tenants, and, um, and interested in trying to get a, a, make sure that what they're doing, uh, would serve the interests of all the tenants who are being affected by the bylaw. Um, and, and this was especially heartening, because when the committee put, the committee that put together the bylaw, there were not only no students, but no tenants on the committee. So I was heartened by the... So I was heartened by the interaction I have with the committee. I think that they will honestly pursue the concerns that this article expresses. And I would urge you to vote to refer it.
And Mr. Hayden for the Select Board.
As this article, the, as the motion to refer is new to us tonight, the Select Board has not had a chance to take a position on it. I would, though, comment that in our discussion about the article, we heard a very extensive report from the Building Commissioner, Mr. Mora, about the progress of the current bylaw in identifying properties and certifying that they're being maintained properly. There is no suggestion that I've heard of that somehow the law is, is ineffective. But rather, we've discovered that it has uncovered, I think, 88% of the possible properties that might have been rented. It's uncovered a number of properties that were considered to be, have been rented and in fact were owner-occupied. So I, I'm not ready to change it or recommend that you change it at all. But that's not exactly the questions in front of us now, is it?
And Ms. Tomlin for the Finance Committee.
Again, this is new to us. This evening, we had recommended, not to recommend, but we did suggest that the concerns of people be taken to the committee so that would fit in with what we had suggested at the time Mr. O'Connor met with the Finance Committee.
And this will require a majority vote. I did have one town meeting member who requested to speak, but I don't know if she knew what the motion was going to be. But Mandy Jo Hanke, I don't know if you're here, but you may come forward or you can speak from there. That's fine.
Hi, Mandy Jo Hanke, Precinct Five. I am a tenant and I am the newest member of the Rental Housing Bylaw Implementation Group. It's quite a name. And we did, at our last meeting, recommend Vince refer it to us if that was something he was willing to do. We, as a group, and I speak for myself in my understanding of what we have, but are not against reviewing it. That has been what we are doing in the group. We heard Mr. O'Connor's concerns about certain specific items of the bylaw. If he had moved to, in terms of the article, I would recommend you, you vote against it because I think you should never mandate something be looked at and then amended. A referral does not make us do anything. We just look at it, we consider it. And if we think it's good as it is, we will recommend no changes. If we think things need to be changed to the checklist, when people, you know, Mr. O'Connor and other tenants say there's a problem, we'll consider them, we'll look at them and we'll see if that is true or not. I think referral is good. There are some concerns of tenants as to the checklist. Unfortunately, some of those concerns are built into current state regulations. Whether we can do anything about them, I don't know. But referral is something that does not affect the current implementation of the bylaw, which has been effective, has been working, has been doing things, has identified landlords, which is one of the two purposes of that bylaw. The second purpose is to help tenants. That is what the Implementation Group going forward is going to be doing. Part of Mr. O'Connor's petition was in concern with the tenants and how they have been affected by this bylaw. And that is what the Implementation Group is currently looking at. So I would say that the bylaw is working. It can always work better, you know, because of, it has, the group has not concentrated on tenants yet. We concentrated on getting landlords registered. That was the first priority. The second priority is to work with tenants, get tenants to know what their rights are, what they can do. And part of that is working with them so that they are comfortable with that checklist when landlords are coming in and looking at their property. So I, I think it would be a good thing to refer his petition article to the group because the group was going to do that and look in that anyway. So that's-
Thank you. Motion for the previous question has been made and seconded. I hear a point of order, yes. We are getting the motion to refer up on the screen. I don't know if that was your point of order.
No. Walter Wannick, Precinct Five. I've attended every meeting of this, of this group and it's actually called the Rental Bylaw Implementation Group.
Thank you. Rental Bylaw Implementation Group. Thank you. That's a fine example of a good point of order, by the way. We are now coming to an immediate vote. If two-thirds of you vote yes, we will then vote on the motion to refer. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. We will now come to a vote on the motion to refer to the- Rental Bylaw Implementation Group. Get that, yeah. And get Rental Bylaw- Rental Bylaw Registration Group? Yeah, get implementation out of there. Wait, is it registration or implementation? Okay, Rental Bylaw Implementation Group. That, that's the motion before us, motion to revert. A yes vote means we refer it and no vote means we do not. All those in favor of the motion to refer, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Before I call Mr. Hayden for a motion, I have two reminders for you. First is just scheduling. He's going to be making a motion that we all come back on June 2nd. The special town meeting will be first on the agenda, followed by Articles 20C and 24. I ask everybody to really, really, really get here maybe 6:55 even so we can really start promptly. The other reminder is you need to bring tally card number six as well as tally cards seven through 12. Don't forget them. Mr. Hayden, do you have a motion?
I will not move to continue debate. Rather, I move to adjourn until June 2nd, Monday at 7:05.
I hear a second. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The ayes have it, we are adjourned. Thank you.